Looks like we're there. All right, Bannan County Commissioners are now in session. First item on our agenda is the Board of Ambulance.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we enter into the Board of Ambulance.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pay the bills.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the bills and exit the Board of Ambulance.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the Commissioners' report and invoices. I do appreciate setting Jerry apart. That just makes it so much easier to look at.
Now they're all the same thing, so...
Grandstands. All over the invoices.
Mr. Chair, I approve the invoices as presented.
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have salary rate approval forms.
Thank you.
We have payroll report.
Do we need to do that?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chair, I approve that we approve the salary rate approval forms and the payroll report as presented.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have alcohol licenses. And then we have memorandum. Authorized to sign for accounts payable.
We're just updating all of those for the ones that are old.
Mr. Chair, I approve that we approve the alcohol licenses and memorandum for accounts payable.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Start reading on. All right. Hannah.
Good morning Commissioners, Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Administrator with the City of Pocatello.
And Christine Howe, Grants Manager with the City of Pocatello, good morning.
Good morning.
So, we are here today to ask you to sign a letter of support for a grant application. The City of Pocatello is submitting to the EPA for about sixteen and a half million dollars. It has no match affiliated with it. So, we're applying for this money to put sewer lines in the South Fifth area and the neighborhoods on the east and west side of South Fifth. We also want to run a greenway trail down South Fifth, all the way to Fort Hall Mine Road, and then back along the base of the lava cliffs to South Second. And then we want to put drinking fountains in our city parks and redo park infrastructure at the Centennial Rainy Park and Constitution Park and involving the local community in making decisions about these improvements. The grant gives us three years to do the work, so it'll be a pretty fast turnaround. It's a no extension requirement, but that's sort of the sum of the grant request.
Okay. John.
What does this letter have to be received by you guys to send in?
As soon as possible.
I'm sorry?
As soon as possible. We have a rolling deadline for submission, but the sooner we get it in, the sooner we'll get reviewed, and if we don't get it, we can revise and resubmit.
So, it could be next week, it could be the week after, something like that?
Yeah, we would prefer on the sooner side. We would like to get it in next, early next week.
And who drafted the letter?
City staff did, yeah.
All right, I'm not comfortable with the language in the letter, so I'm comfortable with all your projects. I like your projects. I think they're a good idea. I'd want to modify the letter.
Okay.
And so, I would put that off until we can look at it and maybe reword it.
Is there a part of the letter, which language that you do not like?
All the language about climate change. I don't like any of that.
So, how would you recommend they change that, then?
Well, I'm not going to just do it off the cuff, but I could certainly look at it and come up with something that would be acceptable.
And I guess my question would be, some of the verbiage, like it says, "climate change" and stuff, is that, does that improve your opportunities and chances for the grant?
This grant is being administered through the Environmental Protection Agency, and one of the main criteria is to impose, you know, projects and infrastructure improvements that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so, the idea of the greenway path being included in this project is to fulfill one of those components, so that more folks will potentially use alternative vehicle transportation, such as bicycles or walking, to help strengthen that reduction in greenhouse gas emissions argument. So, that's part of including some of that language.
Yeah, it is a climate change grant, so that is the...
So, that's why the verbiage is there, because of the purpose of the grant. So... I mean, if we're applying for the grant, sometimes you have to say the things that the grant people want to hear.
Well, if you guys want to sign it, that's fine with me. I'm not signing it.
Do you have a concern?
No, I'm not a big fan of the climate change. I was in a meeting the other day with a lot of people from Washington DC and the Climate Change and Climate Equity Program, and I felt like a very redneck person sitting in that room, because I'm on the opposite side of the table. However, I do think Pocatello needs more bike paths and more of the things that this project will entail, so in the interest of trying to create those things, I'm willing to look forward and know that I don't necessarily support climate change and that, but if that helps us improve our infrastructure and create the biking path, I'm willing to do something like that.
Okay.
So...
Mr. Chair, I would move that we sign the letter of support for the infrastructure as identified in here.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Oh. Passes two to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we can provide project updates and grant updates as they come in and keep you apprised.
Thank you. All right, Melissa.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. I'm Melissa Hartman with Veteran Services. And I, I was like...
Sorry, my nose itched.
I was like, am I getting some kind of a cue to just...
No, my nose itched.
Okay, sorry. I'll be serious. I am here today to talk to the Commissioners about the Field of Heroes. We need to get authorization to sign and sign the lease to use Century High School, so you guys should have a copy of that. And accompanying with that lease, we're also going to need a certificate of insurance. This is the same thing that we've done every year. So, we're looking at that. I don't know if you want me to go on with what else I need. I got a lot of things on the agenda today.
On this, in the agreement, there is an indemnity clause.
That needs to go.
We've always crossed that out.
Yeah.
And then Legals looked at this.
I would assume they have, because Christie's had it, but I don't know the answer to that for sure.
Because Christie had it, doesn't mean Legals had it.
I know. I sent it to her. I don't know if they've reviewed it or not, if Legal has reviewed it or not. I don't have the answer to that question.
And Christie doesn't send it up to Legal.
Okay, then no, they probably have not.
Whoever department sends it to Legal and has that conversation.
Okay, so, no, I have not sent it to Legal.
Okay.
I know in the past, they have drawn a line through that and just initialed it and then signed it, and the school district has never really given us any grief about that.
Is it the same contract?
It is the exact same contract. I think it's pretty standard. I think it's their standard leasing contract.
Probably the same one that we do for the facilities for elections and stuff, but I would rather have Legal take a glance at it.
Okay, that's fine.
Before we actually sign it.
Will I need to come back in for the signing?
No, not if they've agreed to it.
Perfect. And if I need to do something else, like have the school district redo a different lease, if they're not comfortable with just the line through it, I mean, I'm happy to go and talk back to the school district and ask them.
And we've done that many times. I mean, we'll sign the line through it and initial it, and if we don't get it back, then we say if they agree to it.
Right.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be there.
Right, right. They've never, they've never said no. But we do, it's a new contracting person. The school district has a new person. I can't even remember her name now, but I'll just get back with her if we want it, if she questions the fact that we've just drawn a line through it. And that could happen, always. You know, somebody new might go, "Why did we draw a line through this?"
Mr. Chair, do you want a motion to approve it pending legal review and crossing out the indemnification clause?
That would be fine.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
So, we have a motion.
Okay.
We'll sign it, but we'd like Legal to look at it.
Perfect.
So, we'll sign it right after they've reviewed it.
Okay.
They can come back by the office, and that's just my signature.
Then I can just pick it up.
Okay?
Pending legal review and crossing out the indemnification clause.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you, guys. And then on the certificate of insurance, I will just get with Josh on that.
If Josh, my chance isn't here, just let me know, and I can get it for you, too.
Okay, super. Thank you so much. All right. Then, thank you, certificate of insurance, or excuse me, the storage. The Field of Heroes has always used Storage Corner. They've always donated that space to the field. It's a significantly large storage unit. The field, due to the economy, Storage Corner is no longer able to provide that for free to the field. It's $160 a month. That is a third of what the Field of Heroes uses as an operating budget, so there's just no way that they can afford that process. They did get a semi truck, an old reefer semi truck that the reefer part is broken down, donated if they want it, if they want it, for storage. The problem being that they would need a place to park that truck. We're wondering if there would be a space at the county, maybe at Roden Bridge, which would be really convenient, since we always do the Field of Heroes at Century High School, if it's something that could be put there.
I'd love to just have a conversation with Kyle and Scott. I mean, those are our two big facilities.
Right.
We have a boneyard up, but I've been trying to get cleaned up forever up at the Event Center, but either one of those two, I think that we could stick a reefer there.
Okay, and they were, I mean, there is talks of possibly asking one of the local artist groups to do like a mural on it or something like that, so it might be something along those lines, but we'll see how that totally works out, if that ends up being an appropriate thing or not.
And I'm, I don't want graffiti on it. I'm just saying.
I will let that, I will let that be known, that that would be a deal breaker.
Well, I just don't see us having a trailer with...
Can they paint something like that?
Well, so, one of the discussions was like a rap, and some of them are very, you know, that could be a photograph, and it could be the photo on it. One of the suggestions was like a train car graffiti type suggestion. And I can see merit in both of those. I can see merit in leaving it just very generic, so that it blends in with whatever, wherever it is. I can see that as well. You know, the Field of Heroes is a national, nationally covered event. It sits in the Library of Congress. It's not like if we had a tastefully done rap on it, that it would be, you know, inappropriate. It kind of would be a, you know, like a, it's a pretty cool icon, you know, and I can see value in it, but I can also see, look, we just need a spot to put that trailer.
Is there potentially a spot out at the landfill that we can do it? Would it be out of the way?
And I guess that brings up my second question, too. So, are you saying that this trailer is going to be movable still? So, would it have to be licensed, have to be insured?
Oh. Man, you bring up really good ideas, or really good points. I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, and that's...
And you're probably exactly right.
If it's movable, that's a different deal to me than if we're going to stick it at the, one of these other places, and that's where it's going to stay. I don't...
Yeah, no, it is movable. That was kind of the idea behind it, is that it would be...
You could take it from one spot to the other, load, unload.
Because then you wouldn't have, then you would, we always, every year, have the hassle of picking it all up, taking it out there, moving it back, and it does have to be accessible, because there are parts in the, that are in that trailer that we use all year long. So, like the flags that go out, they're stored in there, but they're used for different patriotic events. We use it for 9/11. We use it for Pearl Harbor. We use them for any kind of patriotic event in Bannan County, those flags go out for, so they have to be accessible. The Walk of Honor in the past has been used for the POW MIA rally, and those podiums have been accessed twice a year, so during the field and then also during the rally. I don't know that they've done that at the rally the last couple of years, but...
And so, where is the rally usually held?
Did you, well, I don't know where it is right now. I think it's in Power County that they're doing it. They're just doing a one afternoon thing. I don't think they're doing a full weekend anymore. That's why I don't think they use it anymore, because...
We're traveling all over in different counties and stuff. I mean, you're going to have to be licensed and...
Well, no, that trailer wouldn't go. That trailer would only move, that trailer would only move twice a year.
It'd still have to be licensed.
You could check, when you talk to Kyle about Smarter Park, he can let you know the licensing costs are. Insurance should not be significant if we have to add it to insurance, so, but you would need, who's going to drive it back and forth?
So, we do have a volunteer driver, the same company, the same company that's donated the reefer. One of their drivers is willing to come in and move it for us. The challenge being is that he works, and sometimes he's not in town, but we know that in the past, we have had one of our employees, who's also in the Army Reserves, who has a CDL, he's actually moved the truck for us in the past, when we've had, when we've used another trailer to transport, or when the Army Reserves would actually deliver for us.
Was he on shift or off shift?
Roden Bridge. For the record, Roden Bridge donated him to the Field of Heroes twice during the field, during setup and during takedown. That was their support of our event, so...
So, he was on payroll?
So, yes.
That's the answer.
But that would be even better, because he's an employee, so if he's driving, the kind of vehicle would be covered.
And so, we have, because of that, I happen to know that there is a truck that could move that trailer for us, if our, if our other volunteer driver was not in town.
I have no problem with the trailer. And then, as we move forward on things like this, I think that's the time we need to talk to Scott, too, and see what is available up there at the Event Center and in that area. If he has any storage areas and stuff, too, it'd be a good conversation piece.
Okay. So, maybe just find out how much it would cost to license it, figure that part out, and then come back. We're probably...
If we're going to, they would have to donate it to the county, and we'd have to accept it, and then it would just...
Okay.
It wouldn't be anything to cover that cost, but it just...
Got to figure that out.
We could figure that out.
Because I'm pretty sure when we are done with the, with the stor, with the Field of Heroes this year in May, I don't think they're going to let us put it back in there in June without charging us, and so, it'll be something that we'll have to move relatively quickly, if that's, do we think that that's something that can be moved through?
Just make sure that it's weatherproof and stuff inside. I mean...
They said it's perfectly fine. It's not, it doesn't have any leaks. There's no issues with it. The reefer's just broke, and it's not worth them, it's not worth it for them to replace it or repair it. They can donate it, write it off, have a tax break, and make more money than repairing it, basically.
Okay. Any questions?
No. Okay, so, I'll work on that a little bit more.
Okay.
And then come back in and let you guys know where we're at, and then we would just have to get on the agenda to, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. We would just need to get on the agenda again to, don't have that company donate the reefer to the county first.
Yeah.
And then we would go from there. Okay, awesome. I can do that. All right. I think that does my requests for the field. I'd like to move on to the education series now. So, as you guys know, I, in the past, have put together an education series. It's a four-part education tool that we use to kind of help veterans on large group scenarios, questions that I have a lot of. One of them, the first one that's going to happen, is the Estate Planning Workshop. During that workshop, the Idaho Military Legal Alliance is on hand, and they actually do simple wills pro bono for veterans and their families. At that event, we have 25 spots for that scenario. Those 25 spots are already pre-registered. That event will be the 26th. We have a waiting list, just because it's been so long, it'll be so long few weeks, so we do have a waiting list of people who are on the list, in case we have anybody drop off at the last minute. So, that's going to be a good process. That's the first one, education series, or of our education series, is the Estate Planning. Then, we'll do a Financial Fitness and Home Buyer, Home Ownership Workshop. We'll also do a, I call it the Three Es of Reintegration, Education, Entrepreneurship, and Employment, so that we can kind of cover all of those topics in a large group setting. And then, the last one will be kind of a menagerie of all of those specific conditions, presumptive conditions. That'll be like Agent Orange exposure, burn pits, PACDAC stuff, a lot of things that encompass a lot of service members at one time, so we'll bring people in to talk about those, some experts to talk about those things. But because of that, we have some costs above and beyond what my normal budget is. So, the State of Idaho has a support fund. It's a grant that could be requested. It's pretty basic. I provided a copy of that. I'd like to request that grant today, but I'd also like to request to be able to route some of my, some of the funds out of the United Way Trust, so that I could purchase the things for the Estate Planning Workshop while we're waiting for the state to decide on the grant, if the Commissioners would agree that the grant is something that we could fill out and sign today.
Okay, let me clarify a couple of things here. So, is the grant, is that this Idaho Division of Veteran Services?
Correct.
Okay, and that's a $3,000 grant?
It is.
With no match?
No match.
Have you talked with our grant team and worked with them?
No.
When we got it, I did ask Nancy, this is, they're calling it a grant, but it's kind of not a grant.
Okay, it's pretty simple.
So, that's why we didn't follow up with her on it.
This is just a program where they have funds available, and if they put in a request, then they might send us the funds.
Yeah.
Right.
And there's no reporting requirements or anything like that, so, and then as far as the United Way money, that's a budget added for $3,000, and there's just over that in cash, so that's normally a per discretion to use.
Okay.
As approved through the budget process.
Okay, and I have no problem on either project filing for this money or utilizing the United Way Trust funds. Question?
Nope.
Let's have a motion on those last two.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the grant request and the usage of the United Way funds as discussed.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate that. Just for my record, is there a specific number I should use when coding the use of the trust?
You should have received that with your budget, but...
I want, I just, I'm really not that up to date in how to do that. I don't want to mess it up. Perfect, okay. Thank you so much for that clarification. That is it for my agenda items, I believe. Yes, yes. One last thing that I did not put on the agenda that I'd just like to bring up, is that I'm wondering if we can request a proclamation for the field, and also, just to let the Commission know that James E. Johnson's Medal of Honor has arrived in Pocatello in Bannan County. It sits at the Bannan County Veterans Memorial Building in the museum, so it's pretty cool. There will be, there will be a ceremony, but I do know that it was in the newspaper yesterday when it came in, so, just so that you guys are aware that it's here.
And would you just, we, I have no problem working on a proclamation. We've done it every year. If you'll just work with Christie?
Yeah, I will, absolutely. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Emma.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Emma Iannicon, Public Information Officer. I'm here to present the contracts for our promotion of Household Hazardous Waste Days. This is our annual program that we offer to county residents for them to dispose of their hazardous waste properly, so that it protects our aquifer and our surrounding environment at the landfill. These contracts presented to you, the first one is for affinity. Those are the televisions that are located in the restaurants throughout the Pocatello area. Those, we've worked with them in the past as well, and then the other one is for radio ads through KZBQ and, I believe, KORR. These are the same ad schedules and costs as what we did last year for household hazardous waste, and the line item, the budget for these promotions, is the landfill's household hazardous waste budget.
So, we have 2,000 in radio ads, basically.
And then the TV ads, it looks like 1,000. Do you think these restaurant TV ads do any good?
You know, last year, we did, so every year at the landfill, when people bring their vehicles up, we asked them how they heard about it, and we didn't get a whole lot from neither radio or the TV ads, so we're going to run it again this year. I've discussed this with Kyle and Dylan and Aubrey over at the landfill to test it out one more year, but we think that after this year, we want to move all of our advertising to social media, because most of the people who go up to the landfill either heard about it through social media or have those magnets already and have been using this service for years and years, so we're going to see, you know, get two years of data and see if there's any change, and if not, that was our plan for 2025.
I wonder if we need another year of data. I mean, is it, is it pretty significant that it's all through social media? Maybe we should just do more social media.
We all seen the show, Dave? The guy acts as President of the United States.
You've not seen that one.
And they, so he's acting as President of the United States, and they tell him that if he can cut so much money out of the budget, that he can have this other project, and so, that's what he does. And one of the questions in the meeting is, so, we're spending a million dollars to advertise to people that have bought a car, to tell them that they should... to people that have bought a car, to tell them that they should like the car that they bought.
Mm-hmm.
And this is, that's what I'm kind of looking at here. Are we, are we telling the people that are already using the facility, "Sure glad you're coming, glad you like with the services that we're giving"?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I, I don't know. I don't know if, if this is good expense of our dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I think that honestly, like we do over here when we have the fair and we do some of these other things, that that's a better expense of these dollars, rather than telling somebody, "Sure glad you come to the landfill."
Kind of agree with John on this one. While I like those affinity ads, again, I question their effectiveness.
Mm-hmm.
And how much are we spending on social media ads for this? Did I miss that?
Right now, um, what, same, I was going to do the same thing that I did last year, and that was $40, um, per Household Hazardous Waste Day for a total of $280 for the year.
For the social media?
Are we touching YouTube with any of that, or is that just?
Just Facebook and Instagram.
I would rather take the money that we're spending on the affinity ads and probably put that in like YouTube-type ads. I think we would have a better ROI on that. Or, or even our, can we use the, the text messaging system to notify stuff like this?
Our AlertSense?
Yeah.
Um-
Is that crossing the line there?
It's a good question. Um, I would like to use the AlertSense, because we spend a lot of money on that system, and there is the capability of that. Um, however, when I've suggested that stuff, there is a lot of hesitation, um, from the Sheriff's Office side of things about using that system, because they want to make sure that when people receive those text messages, they know it's something really important. Um, to me, it's a difference in branding, so the, like, those text messages that would be from Household Hazardous Waste would be branded as that, whereas an emergency text message would be branded as that, and they would, I'm a, I'm fairly certain that we would be able to have those sound different, you know, they'd be coming from a different phone number and everything, so it wouldn't necessarily, um, be so much noise that those emergency text messages are drowned out, but I understand their concern with that as well, so.
Is there a disclaimer when you sign up for AlertSense as to what you're signing up for?
Um, yes.
Because if you're signing up for what you think are just emergency versus now you're going to start getting random advertising, that might cross the line where people may not appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You know, what about this? What about not doing any of these ads? Just doing what we're currently doing on Facebook, and then you check and see if there's any difference?
Okay.
And then we, we've got that money in reserve if we want to advertise something else.
You know, that's not a bad idea for the first, for the first, how many Hazardous Waste Days? One a month?
There's seven, um, yeah, April through October, one a month.
Well, we could do April and May, and if we see a significant decline, then we know we should probably go back and do some of this, and if the numbers hold true, then we're okay.
Okay. I will say that this week, um, the radio stations and the television, um, the affinity people have been generous to start airing our ads already. Um, and then I've, I was on the news, the radio this morning and on Tuesday morning promoting this, so April will be a little different than what we'll be doing for May.
But we probably should do it in April to kick it off, so everybody knows it's time. But then for, for May and June, let's hold back and see, see if there's a decline.
Okay. And for, I'll, I'll inform, you know, the people I've been working with on this, um, since they have been starting these ads already, if they have any concern with that, I might be back, um, to address that with you guys, but.
So with that, then, rather than sign names, because there are contract that has it all in it, if you submit an invoice?
What do you sign?
For April?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, we're not committing to the whole packet here, so if we just haven't submitted invoice since we already started some in April?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And do the one month or two month, and, and go from there.
What's the, what's your response rate on the radio ads? Has that been, has that counted?
Um, no, it's very, it's pretty low. I don't know the exact numbers, um, but I can get those from Aubrey. She, she's the one who, um, takes that data down for me.
Okay. Well, I'm okay with, again, kicking it off in April and then back it off and see if that impacts anything in May and June.
And stick with the, um, original plan of the $40 for social media ads for May? Or do you want me to increase that for the month of May?
See what it would cost us to increase it for including some YouTube stuff in there?
Okay. I'll do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Shanda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have a procurement update for the board this morning. If you'd like to stop at the top of the dashboard with the Roadham Bridge project for road striping. In the past, we have piggybacked off of a material bid and then gone out to bid for labor. This year, in talking with Kyle, we want to try something a little different to see what kind of response we get back and potentially money-saving opportunity, and that's going to be to offer three different options for the bid that we do this year. One of them is going to do materials only for those companies that just supply the materials. The second option is going to be for labor only, for those companies that just supply those labor. And the third one's going to be for both, for companies that have piggybacked those two things together and been able to supply both the materials and the labor to put it on the roads. Um, this is going to give, uh, Roadham Bridge, uh, way more information than we've had in the past. They'll be able to compare it against previous year's costs and then see what is best for them as far as their in-house labor and their things that they've got going on and what they might want to do moving forward. Uh, but that should be drafted into them by the beginning of next week.
Which one is this?
That is the very top one for the road striping.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. If we drop down to emergency services for the Lava Ranch Fuel Reduction Contractor, those documents, charity has compiled them all, and they have been reviewed, and they're back out to her for final comment, and then they're going to be submitted to legal, but we are on track to have them go live on April 16th. On the Commissioners for the Sixth Avenue Interance renovation, uh, that has been published once, and it will go again on Saturday, and we already do have one construction company registered for the pre-bid on that, so we're getting a little traction on that project. If we move down to Public Works, the road chip bids, uh, that has been out for solicitation, and those bids are due on Monday, and we'll have a bid opening on Tuesday for that project, and they'll be able to move forward. And the final update for you is the bottom one for the Commissioners, the Architectural Services. I will have a recommendation for the board to award that project on Tuesday. If there were any questions?
Lots of big projects.
That is, they just keep coming.
Anything?
Nope.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Signature on Mountain Shadows.
I thought we were re-landscaping out there, are we not?
That project hasn't been approved.
Okay, all right. I would, would we hold off on that till we have that discussion?
There's a couple of questions on this, too. Circled on the question marks on the contract and stuff, so. Do you have any to do, deal with them at all, Dan?
No, that's Levi's contract, and I just pay the bill.
How do you get signed up for that?
Our, our lawn mowing contractor doesn't have a contract, we can get rid of him at any time, so.
Okay. Okay, so we'll hold up on Mountain Shadows. Then we have public hearing notice. Any concerns there?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the public hearing notice.
Good motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, let's go ahead and we'll go to the discussion on the forensic pathology. I've received a lot of phone calls, a lot of, a lot of interest. I've talked to a lot of different people, and, uh, I've talked to all the elected officials in Bannan County, and everybody says, oh, it's a good idea, uh, but we don't have answers and we have concerns. And, uh, as I've looked through projects that I believe we need to fulfill in Bannan County, I can't put 3.5 million dollars into ARPA funds towards this and neglect some of the other projects that we have. Jeff, comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead and let John go first.
I don't have any comments at this time.
This has been a pretty divisive topic, and it has fractured the county in numerous ways, numerous ways. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Crowder on his campaign of fear and misinformation. It has worked, and so once again, Bannan County is willing to let something like this go to Idaho Falls or Twin Falls, and I'm okay with that. If that's what the county wants, so be it. So in the interest of trying to heal the fractures within the county, I will move that we approve killing the project and make the first vote to yes.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. But to go along that way, I, I appreciate all that Jeff has done. I, I have stated that I believe this should be a state function, and all the work that Jeff has done can transfer to the state, and, and it can still move forward. I, it, I believe that this is a necessity in our area. As I've talked with Commissioners from every county around us, uh, most of them, 90% of them are, says, yeah, it's a great idea, but in talking to them, they've also said that we have an obligation to protect Bannan County and, and going forward, so thank you for all your work. I, I, you and Braden and, and, and like I said, it started with Terrell. It started in 2019, and, uh, and it's, it's tough to let, let it go, but I think that it's time that we need to, to move forward and look at what other projects we can accomplish and move forward with in Bannan County. So that brings us to you, Kristy, and a discussion on ARPA funds.
Mr. Claus or Tom Troller? I provided the board with an update on the current projects. Uh, I do also want to update, actually, sorry, backup. The obligation deadline, on Thursday afternoon, we received notice that the obligation deadline has been moved from April 30th to July 31st. That buys us three more months. Um, I'm still hoping we can find two. All of our projects, get them obligated, but we can get them hopefully through the procurement process, so that we'll have better numbers when I do my report in July, so that if there's 10,000 here, 5,000 here, those numbers can be added up to do some of the smaller projects that we have sitting out there, um, and then not have to turn back as much money. There's probably going to be a little bit here and there, just simply because projects won't come in at the dollars we think. Um, we have contingencies built in, but hopefully with that deadline, that'll minimize those dollars that get turned back. Uh, on the ARPA list that I provided you, I did the update with $500,000 for ver buildings and then $100,000 for tear down. Uh, I talked to Jamie yesterday, and I guess there's some issues with that going on, um...
And, and I, I told Shanda this morning, we have a meeting set for 4:00 on Wednesday with the Fair Board. I have a meeting with the city of Downey again on Tuesday, so there's discussion who owns property, who owns the buildings on properties and stuff, and so that's still in the works of figuring all that stuff out.
Okay.
So that, that part of it is on hold.
Okay, but we'll still just keep the 600 there in case it's needed?
Yes, it's, it's, and earmarked.
Okay. Uh, I did tell Jamie, any work that's done out there, the vendor, if it's over 50,000, will need a UEI number, so she knows that now as well. I think anybody that has a project knows that they need that, so hopefully that doesn't get missed.
And I, I told her once, and I don't know how far it's gone, but she still needs to come through procurement.
Right.
With all these things that she's doing.
I know, I'm just trying to reinforce, Shanda, that we need the UEI number. The departments know, so hopefully between all parties.
I'm already re-emphasizing a lot of things here.
Yes, but also then everything isn't falling on Shanda's lap to make sure that's done either, so. Um, the next update is Bannan County Events has now spent their $2 million of the ARPA dedicated dollars, so this quarter will be the last reporting I have to do on those, and then everything is just strictly going to be done through Bannan County Events, and it's just going to be their cash.
Okay.
Rolling forward.
That's good.
On the bottom of the report, um, we still have, wow, I need to add the 3.5 from forensic. I didn't know how today's meeting was going to go, so I did not anticipate it, uh, but there was one, just under 1.2 million dollars that we still need to allocate, add the 3.5 to that, so we've got just under 4.7 to reallocate out. We do have, based on the current projects, 225,000 of expenditure category items that need to be allocated out. The rest of the monies will be for general county.
Only 225,000 left?
Yes.
Oh, that's pretty good.
So that's very positive news.
Okay.
Um, forensic pathology was put at general county revenues, so that money can be spent on pretty much anything we want.
Okay, great.
Um, I also gave you the backup list.
And, and I, I just want to go right here, that I, because of the decision that was just made, I want to come back next Thursday.
Okay.
Evaluate what's on the list, what's on the backup list, and any projects different, so that everybody now knows what funds are available on, on the discussion that we're going to have.
Okay. Uh, I can go back and take that 3.5 off of the ARPA list. Uh, we do have 100,000 spent already in forensic pathology, so there's not a true 3.5 million to spend. There's, if you look at that list, we've spent 113,500 roughly, so we'll have to take that off of that 3.5, so it'll leave, you know, 3.4, just under.
And that's-
So I can update this list and provide that to the agenda request group, which includes you guys, so that on Thursday, we can reallocate projects. Do you want to wait and do it the following week pending the Fair information? Or do we want to keep aggressive on this?
I, I think we still want to keep aggressive on it. I, I think we can have a discussion and if we need to, but I think every week, it's not a bad deal to continue to talk about these funds.
Okay. Um, we did spend this quarter 2,800 on forensic pathology. I was going to see if you would like me to move those to the forensic pathology fund out of ARPA. It's only 2,800, but that would-
That should be out of the other funds that we had, that 900,000.
Any costs that we have spent on Lombard Conrad has come out of here for the building, because it was a go, so we needed that ISU money for operations.
Well, can we go the other way with it now?
Only the 2,800. I've already reported all of the other funds.
Okay, we'll stick the 2,800 out of the, the other funds.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I'll update this list, provide that again to the board. Um, on the backup list, Kyle did have clarification, um, the vehicle replacements on the fleet plan, that million dollars, that was a benchmark dollar, so that he could get replacement plans going forward, so we probably need to take that 1,047 out, and then if you choose to do the fleet replacement, um, that would be scheduled for next year, that'd be the 1.2, so I'll just clean that up, take that out, so that-
Are you, where are you at right now?
On my backup list? they were going to redo elections, too? So do we need these ADA doors still? Okay.
Okay.
And then we probably need to clarify on the corner, there is $100,000 budgeted currently in ARPA projects for his cooler. If that's going to be...
That'll be part of the discussion that we end up having.
But I just wanted to clarify, if that's going to be a project we don't do, that's an extra $100,000 to reallocate.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Other than that, any questions on anything else on here?
Lots.
Anything I can answer for me right now?
Not at this point.
Okay. Then I will get an updated list sent to the board, and then you can go from there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Next item? Super quick. The next item is a quick discussion about the FY '25 budget. I probably should put this off because Jason's not here, but I wanted to double check the, I've sent you the calendar. Tentatively, we have the public hearing set for August 27th at 11 o'clock. I need to fill out our public hearing notice. Is that a good date?
I took the calendar and marked it in mind, so August 27th.
Okay. I just wanted to double check before I submitted this, and you didn't like that date. And then what I'll do is reschedule the budget discussion maybe for two weeks, and we can talk about the letter that we'll submit and any direction that the board wants me to put in that letter. We usually try and do a joint agreement on what to say so that departments know how to turn in their budgets. And those sheets will go out no later than the 19th.
Thank you very much. With that being said, we'll be at recess till 10:30. We have three interviews.